Go ahead and get Christina on the phone, the recorder's on.
Okay.
Barbie, are you ready?
Yes ma'am, thank you very much.
All right, I would like to call Village Council, work session meeting to October 31st at 10:00 a.m. I show that we have a quorum of Mayor Protem Dispenzera, Councilwoman Vandenberg, and missing-
Hey.
And missing our-
Okay, I'm gonna mute y'all.
Okay.
Missing our Councilman Epps and de facto Councilwoman Mary Scoot. So we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. First off is the agenda, do we have any
Nope.
Changes, additions?
Nope, you want to talk about change in Halloween?
I do, I do want to, I do want to add a quick discussion about Halloween.
Sixteen?
Yeah, but I definitely want to be able to talk to that, so if we table anything. I also would like to announce, if I could, I will be needing to leave at 11:30.
Me too.
Hard stop, 11:30, we're okay with that?
Okay.
But, but I do want to just have a brief discussion.
Okay, where do you want to put it? Do you want to put it as, as number one?
We can put it at the end to make things simple, and then we can table anything else and then add that for a five-minute quick discussion.
C-16, okay.
All right, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. First up we have Villatall, do we have anything? Christina, you have anything to share with us on the phone?
Mute.
No, she's not on mute, she muted us, we didn't mute her.
We didn't mute her, and I, as far as I know, there's nothing on Villatall.
Christina, can you hear us?
Okay, so she can hear us.
She should be able to hear us. Oh, maybe I mute her. No, I did not.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
I'll send her a text.
I doubt if there's anything for, do you know anything from Villatall that you need to know?
Oh, there you are, there you are. Do you need, yes, do you have anything for Villatall?
For what?
Villatall.
I do not, no.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, now we'll go to C1, items of discussion, first off was distribution of land use plan, citizen survey result. That's where it is.
Okay, great, so as you can see, the results of the survey are in. This item is just really to distribute the survey results, so that you can look at them and, you know, you can see what the residents think. Ultimately, the survey is going to guide the policy in the land use plan. I'm not actually distributing the land use plan right now, because it's just a draft. But, yeah, this survey will, the results of the survey will influence things like ordinances, taxes, services, and design. So it's really exciting.
So we're gonna, so just basically go over this, absorb it all, and then we're gonna talk about it in November?
Next time, yeah.
Okay, all right, cool, wings, awesome.
Because it's a lot.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't want to sit here and-
Right.
Yeah, okay, cool.
So we're not, we're, is this just for us to look at?
Just for us to look at, and then-
And then talk about it on, are we gonna put it on the-
November 12th.
November 12th?
This is the-
So basically take time to go over it and mark questions and things like that?
Anything that you've been able to highlight real quick, just a heads up, that was surprising, or?
Well, nothing surprising, but there is some good news in that Village Center has a majority support. That was one of the things that we were waiting on in the land use plan and planning board before we, you know, started talking about the details of Village Center. Is that supported by the residents of Marvin, and now that answer is yes.
Okay.
Awesome, okay.
Good, good.
Nothing else is really surprising, there are a lot of, you know, as expected, people don't want increasing density, they, you know, oppose commercial, traffic is the biggest concern. They like sidewalks, trails and stuff, and, you know, everything else, mostly it was expected. And the comments are all there, all, you know, there's like 12 pages of the open end comments, yes, you can read them all.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, next up, moving on, is discussion of sidewalk swap and landscape slash reuse shed buffer slash prices.
Okay, great, so there's another packet, there's an additional packet of stuff, stuff that we, you know, researched since the agenda went out. There's, there's a couple of things, one from the attorney and one from me. Basically Chaplain is saying that, well, last time, if you recall, the discussion was that can the village pay Theral Farms for the landscaping? I just started on this topic, so I'll just restart my sentence probably.
Just for the record, Ms. Scoot, there's a lie.
Aren't you not waiting for Christina?
No, she has a flat tire, so she's not here.
She's on the phone.
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
Oh, hi Christina.
She's got-
Hey, sorry, I've got y'all muted, it's kind of hard to hear y'all.
Sorry, what's right, talk loudly.
Ah, yeah, sure, sure. Okay, so, the attorney says that there's precedence that the village should not pay for anything that is the benefit of individual homeowners. You can read the memo here, it basically says that, you know, it's, the, the main takeaway is that tax revenues may not be used for private individuals or corporations, no matter how benevolent. So he advises that we don't pay for the landscaping that NCDOT isn't putting back in after they plan to redo the burn. But what I found is that, you know, another question was asked, is what's the consistency of the cross-section of the sidewalks, basically? And so the next, the next map shows, if you're looking at the text, the text is upright, north is to the right. So you'll see that north of Newtown Road, they actually have sidewalks that are five feet on both sides. So it wouldn't be too out of place to ask NCDOT to make that 12-foot sidewalk just a five-foot sidewalk. Also, in addition to keeping the other side as five feet, because it would be consistent with what's north of Newtown Road, and the 12-foot sidewalk can begin south of Marvin.
Hold on, if I understood the end of that report, the attorney is saying that we should not be providing landscaping on their yard perhaps, but no buffers whatsoever?
Not no buffers, because buffers work for the road and the homeowners, but, I mean, this is, this is his words, and I'm kind of interpreting it because he's not here. Basically, he's saying that we can't pay for something that will be of the benefit of the homeowner only.
Yeah, that, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't mind talking to Chaplain, and I'll have to say it for the record. So obviously I won't be here for very long, but the reality is that that's just not the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is not to provide individual homeowners with a buffer. It's that it's a project that the village is partaking in and paying for, just like an applicant or a developer. So for example, we have the Village Hall plans, right? The Village Hall plans were submitted as required with a landscape plan. A lot of the landscaping that we would install at Village Hall would be required buffers, tree mitigation, buffering for the, for the neighbor next door, right? If you want to draw a comparison, that's a neighbor, I mean, that's for the benefit of the person next door to a more intensive use, like Village Hall. So this idea that somehow we all of a sudden gave the code doesn't, doesn't sound right to me, honestly.
I get what you're saying, I guess that's not as close of analogy, because that's us building Village Hall, whereas this would be us paying for something on someone else's property.
Well, no, 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 I was just gonna say, I think we, we can go round and round, because I, I know what your point is, and I, and I see what Chaplain's saying, so I think we should probably wait until the 12th.
Sure.
And have him be able to explain legally, like, where we're going, because this is, I mean, this is a memo, like, I can sit here and read it and be like, okay, great, but there's also interpretation of, you know, the law, where it's coming from.
I get that, I just want one clarification, though, to make sure I'm not, I'm understanding. Is the village not participating in the implementation of those improvements?
Yes, but the village is paying for the pedestrian infrastructure, which is more clearly for the public use than landscaping.
Exactly, but my point is, that's all I want to know right now, is, is the village participating in this improvement plan? They don't have to, the village doesn't need to install those walkways, right? They're doing that because it's part of the land use plan, they're not required.
Well, that's what I don't know, because I feel like NCDOT came to us and said, this is what we're doing, you guys are gonna participate.
At the meeting that I went to, they gave us the option, that if we wanted to improve it, that they would either put in a five, five, you know, foot walkways, or the eight-foot walkways. That's at least the meeting I went to.
But they were, but they were gonna put in something regardless, and we were gonna be on the hook for part of it.
I don't know that they were going to install sidewalks, except per maybe our code, but I don't know that they were going to necessarily do that, that's something we need to check.
That's, that was my understanding when we first started discussing this, is, it was, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna take it all the way down. It's a matter of, what do you guys prefer, size-wise? And do you want, you know, two pedestrian, or two, like, multi-use on each side, but we're doing it, and you guys are gonna have to pony up some money? So we just need to get clarification on that.
Yeah, does it make sense to, for the November meeting, if we have Chaplain here to have a representative-
Oh, yeah, he's gonna be here anyway.
He will be here.
Well, no, wait, do we have a November?
Yeah, yeah, regular, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We don't, we don't have a work session, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say, though, that we opted for the, we opted for a more intensive use, we opted for an eight-foot, eight-foot multi-lane sidewalk, right?
Sure.
So we just need to find out, so if we're all in agreement, can we have Christina just kind of get Chaplain to get some clarification on, like, if we directed DOT that we wanted something more than the minimum, what our, if that puts us on the hook more for the burn work? Is that good? Are you guys okay with that? If she talks to him about that?
Is this on the landscaping and the burn, or just the burn?
It's the burn, it's the burn landscape, like, it's the whole, it's the whole thing.
If it were up to me, I, I, it would be a little more general than that, but-
Oh, well, just, but I'm just saying, are we all in agreement that Christina can go talk to Chaplain, get some more, more than just this, and talk about it in the November 12th meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should I just say more clarification on the agreement with NCDOT?
Yes.
For the widening? Yeah, I don't know if you'll all agree, but I'm, I'm, I would prefer that it be looked at in terms of the, what the code, my intent when bringing this up several months ago-
Was the code, yeah.
Was the, what was, right, compliance with the code, not are we providing improvements for a specific individual, but what do we do to comply with the code?
Yep. Okay, Christina, if you can do that, that'd be awesome, awesome.
Okay, I'm gonna, can I say something real quick? As far as we're getting through now, so y'all may have said this, or it may have been said, I just can't hardly hear. But we have not signed an agreement with DOT yet, so we could still try to negotiate with them to do a certain, you know, minimum level of landscaping, and I don't know if that conversation's been had with Travis Presler, but even, even, you know, Chaplain has his legal recommendation, it doesn't mean that council can't still provide something. They just have to figure out what they're gonna do and have a rationale behind that, but we'll definitely look into it some more.
Okay.
And in compliance with the code.
Especially if we, if there's precedent already from other, when they go into widening things and they're doing this, if there's been precedent, what has that been with other towns and what? You know, that would be something that I'd really, you know-
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely look into that.
Thank you.
And it doesn't seem, if we are having to comply with our code, doesn't mean that we have to necessarily all the cost burden, it may be that NCDOT might too, I don't know. If they were ready, the way, this is my analogy, if they were ready to put in a five-foot sidewalk, because the code requires it, right? Same goes for any other code or ordinance or buffer that we have, so it might be a matter of them having to cost share, I'm just saying.
And the neighborhood, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
We've got options.
Okay, we'll look into it some more, and I, again, I could barely hear some of this conversation, so Barbie's taking some good notes, I'll have to go back and listen to y'all.
Be and listen to us. Well, we got the recorder wrong, so.
Okay, I'm putting you back on mute, because it's really loud.
Well, you're gonna talk about the sub drainage next.
Okay.
All right, so we're moving on.
Well, no, wait, wait, I still, I still wanted to explain the rest of the things that I just handed out. Basically, well, since, I've started talking about this, and we kind of backtracked, so I'm gonna repeat a little bit. But basically, one of the questions was, you know, if we swapped the 12 and five-foot sidewalks, or we reduced the five-foot sidewalk, would that make it inconsistent with what's north and south of us? And I found out, actually, that north of Newtown Road, you can see in this cross-section, the red are the sidewalks, and what's on the, if you turn this, this way, this is the, this is north. If you have the text normally, this, north is to the right, so you can turn it this way, and that's north. So what's to the right of the road is on the Theral Farm side, and north of Newtown Road, they actually have five-foot sidewalks on both sides, and south of it is where they start the 12-foot sidewalk on that side. So it would not be inconsistent to ask NCDOT to reduce just the 12-foot sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk. That would actually shift the right-of-way back seven feet, which is what the resident who came here was originally asking, well, wanting for.
Can you explain that one more time?
Okay, so you could take it to maybe the, the next cross street before they bumped it out to the 12-foot?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Here's my only problem with that, though, I mean, again, code and land use, we've been talking about the fact that development needs to be pedestrian-friendly, right? That's been key from the beginning, trying to make sure that any development that's commercial is integrated for multi-use purposes and, you know, enjoyment of residence. I also, obviously, I understand where Theral Farms is coming from, and I think we need to think about that as well. But, we're not gonna have a heap of a lot of commercial in Marvin, and Marvin Gardens is one of those places. If you want to encourage people and their families to go there and make sure that they're, you know, everyone within the vicinity can walk there comfortably, it seems like counterintuitive to reduce it right there for the development.
Okay, I get your point. Does Marvin Gardens not have to do the sidewalk there?
They have to do the five-foot requirement, or are they doing eight-foot? I can't remember now.
Well, on the plan, it's got 12 feet.
But are they doing it?
This is Marvin Gardens right here.
Yeah, but are they doing it, or is that what NCDOT is doing?
I think NCDOT, I think NCDOT is doing it, because they're already building what's gonna be there now, and then NCDOT is gonna come back.
And rip it up and redo it?
Yeah, be, be sure of that.
We need to figure that out, because-
The development standards say, and they agree to, install the multi-use paths as part of their condition.
That's why I was, if we're so gung-ho about them, that should be a 12-foot path that Marvin Gardens pays for, so then after Weddington Chase or whatever, or, you know, you can-
I get that, but if you're gonna-
You're gonna go five-foot?
Yeah, exactly, then you're gonna have 12, and then you reduce it, and then, I'm just saying that, I don't think we should just be so quick to say, eh, five-foot feet to Theral Farms is fine. If we really want to consider, you know, if you want to investigate and be sure, what's being provided, what's gonna be torn apart?
Yeah.
And how's that gonna affect pedestrian-
We definitely need to know that, like, that's gonna be crazy, if they're installing it and then it gets ripped out.
Yeah.
Because I know that we've talked about that with them, with DOT, but I don't remember.
But I also remember talking about possibly in some areas doing a shift of the whole roadway.
They've already incorporated that, the roadway shifted five feet away, but even still, it's impacting the burn.
So again, we need, we need more information, and this is way far off, so we just, but, but we do need to figure out what Marvin Gardens is in there, if we're in it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, just so that I'm remembering, so the, so obviously Marvin Gardens is moving forward now. But from, am I understanding that these improvements now are moved all the way to 2040?
No, like, 20, like, 20-
Seven?
Yeah. Like, it says the contract is gonna be presented to us in 23, which means it's probably like-
They're going to bid in 25.
So chances are that the-
So it could be like 30.
So unless they deliberately hold off Marvin Gardens, right, they will be putting it in, they're not gonna be-
Yeah, no.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
You're saying 20 what?
27 or 28. She's saying 2030.
2028.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just the way you're, we're saying that, 20-
I know, 28 sounds really far, doesn't it?
I'm not saying 700 years from now.
2800?
None of us will have to worry about it. Okay, moving forward, you okay with that?
Yeah, can I, point of information, is the agenda stayed the same, or has anything changed?
We added a C, number 16, to discuss changing Halloween.
Oh, changing, we can do that? What power we have.
That's it, besides that, everything stayed the same.
It'll be a real quick conversation, so.
That's it?
That's it.
So next up, we have a discussion of NC Department of Transportation's sub drainage and roundabouts.
Christina?
Hey, so I'm in the car, I'm on the way in.
Woo!
Wow.
So that basically is just asking for the contract to be let to the, I don't have the information right here, it's from me, but it's the lowest bidder, I think it was around $10,000 for the sub drainage installation, and then no more than $2500 for permitting and engineering. And we have the money and, and the budget, which was, like, y'all know that we weren't gonna put it towards landscaping, it was gonna be actually for, for the sub drainage and those engineering fees that are associated with that instead of the landscaping.
Okay, and that's for both of them, both roundabouts, right?
Correct, yep.
So are you picking it based on lowest bidder?
Yep.
Yes.
And we, they have some, we, we have, I guess, the background on them, that they're legit, and maybe some things like this they've done before?
Yes, yes, they, they have.
Okay. All right, and when would that start?
We will sign the contract right after, you know, y'all let the project, and then we will basically get them to start as soon as they can, so. It depends on the weather, obviously, I don't know if they can do it when it gets cold, but as soon as, as soon as possible.
So do you need action on that today, or can that wait till the November meeting?
She said consent agenda in November.
Okay, consent agenda, okay, great. All right, anything else?
Any questions?
That's it for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of minor subdivision application, number 19-12273, the interlude.
Cool, I'm just trying to find it in the packet here.
That's the next one pass after the subdrum.
All right, here it is.
Is this, where's the Marvin Road?
Yeah.
They're keeping the home in the back?
Yeah, there's a home in the back right now. Has anyone else found it?
I see a lot of pipes and stuff already stayed out.
All right, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just talk about it for a minute, so, Mr.-
You're in a minute.
Okay. Mr. Jackson is proposing to subdivide his roughly 10 acres into four lots, which I've put a staff report in it that explains why he qualifies for a minor subdivision. So as part of that process, he can skip straight to the final plat after the sketch plan is approved, thank you, thanks for that. That's why I was, I was confused. So this went to planning board, planning board approved it with a few changes that were made in the, in the revision that you see in front of you. And this is, I mean, as far as I can see, very standard. He's got four lots, the three lots that are new, he's planning on selling them, and then he'll, he'll have a, someone else build a house. So the improvements, the improvements require, there are no improvements required, because he's getting water from the water line that goes along Waxall Marvin Road, and he's doing septic. And there are no new roads, so.
So the driveways will just be off of Waxall Marvin Road?
That's correct.
Okay. And, so the, the big lot, where the existing house is, if, is that gonna stay, or is that gonna be torn down, or what's the?
I think that's gonna stay, is that correct?
Stay, okay.
One deviation you might notice is that the driveway is on the very edge of the property, where we normally require a tree preservation strip, so. You know, that was-
That was actually, yeah, where is, where is the driveway?
The existing driveway is that speckled, textured, like, looped thing on the far left.
Yep.
That, that, that's the existing?
Right.
Oh, okay.
The other three houses are not there.
Where, oh, these are French in the, Matt Waxall Marvin?
Yeah.
And the driveways will be in the view shed, I think, I guess.
Of course.
For such a small thing, do they plan to do an HOA or something like that, some sort of, you know, that, that answer?
Or according to set of restrictions, for the properties that will be adhered to the benefit of all property owners?
Right, certain things like the maintenance of the tree preservation areas will be, it, it, there's an option to just have it as a deed restriction within the four properties, as opposed to having HOA.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand, so the existing house is there, the driveway is there, there's no new road proposed?
No, all, all the three new houses would have driveways on accessing Waxall Marvin Road. And that's actually one of the-
Let me see if I'm wrong, don't they have to show that, though? Have to show where the driveways would be, wouldn't they?
No, I don't think that's one of the requirements, I can check though.
The driveways will go through the view shed, probably.
Yeah, that's primitive, though.
I mean, how else would you do it?
Yeah, same.
Would you do like, oh, I mean, the only other option would be to come in on one home and then have a, like, almost like a, not a roundabout, but a cut-in, and then, and then-
You can always come around the back.
They back out of the driveways and then go out.
Yeah, the problem with that is that that would involve the installation and, and of a new road, which would make it no longer a minor subdivision.
That's right.
So.
But I don't see, I mean, having a driveway, like, is a big, there's driveways across the street.
Yeah, there's, like, if you go down Waxall Marvin, there's-
I just want to, I'm not great at looking at things, I'm finding rights.
Can I ask a, you guys may have a problem if I ask a question of the applicant real quick? As I drive by, I see a lot of stakes up in there, or-
Guys for septic.
All septic, so that's all.
Another septic, yeah. Before we did anything, I had a source on us out there to verify that I had septic, I ordered a second approval.
Everything works in there, or is it gonna be?
It's all, all the same.
Good.
Not the design, but the-
Right, right.
The driveway isn't required, as for this list of things that are required in a final plat.
And is this something that will just go to the consent agenda?
It can, if you, if you have no revisions that you want to see.
Planning boards looked at it?
Planning board has, they did it at their September 17th meeting and approved it, or recommended it for approval.
Okay.
Does it need a public hearing?
Let me check about that.
My only, my only, I guess, I don't even think it's a conservative, my question is, if for some reason on the biggest lot where the existing house is, like, at some point in the future the existing house gets torn down, and where's the new house gonna go? Are there any restrictions there? Can they then try to subdivide that?
Well, okay, that, that's a few questions, I can answer them all, one at a time. So are, there are regulations on lots, one is that they have to be 130 feet in width where the house is going, and have 50 feet of road frontage. It would be pretty near impossible to make two lots that were compliant with that configuration.
Okay.
So, I mean, unless someone comes up with something, I don't, just because of there's that, there's that little choke, choking point, I don't think there, there's possible.
That was, a lot of that property that's behind the three lots is actually, you know, in a stream.
Yeah, I was gonna get, I was gonna mention that too, that's correct. Most, yeah, most of the back part that you see is actually in a stream, stream buffer.
Okay.
And so it's wooded, and there's, it's not likely that we-
That's why we did, that's why we did the one we did.
Yeah. Right, so.
So if, so if they did decide to tear it down, so obviously they really couldn't subdivide that, just because there's not gonna be enough road frontage, but if they did decide to tear it down and build something new?
They could put it anywhere within the setback lines and outside of the stream buffer.
Okay, so it could go, like, right in the front?
It could.
Okay.
But that's why there's an 85-foot view shed, you know, and setback. But that's why there's an 85-foot view shed, you know, and setback.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, um, do we have the letters saying that they're installing septic? Is that what the plan is, them to install septic?
Right.
So, what, have they provided any of that information, or?
Uh, the septic area is on the back of this sheet here. This is, again, this is actually not required either for a final plat, but he elected to show it anyway.
Well, the final plat still has to be consistent with the other portions of the code, right? I mean, that's, so it's not just a matter of, like, what they apply for, but whether or not things comply. So, sometimes you need information on the plat that shows that they're gonna comply.
Right.
So, do we need a public hearing?
No, we don't. Only construction plans need a public hearing, and since a minor subdivision can skip straight to final plat, the final plat does not require a public hearing.
Um, you're not asking us to make a decision, right?
That's correct. You can put it on your, as Joe said, you can put it on your consent agenda for next.
So, septic fields will be in the front? Those are the, so, no issues with putting driveways over top of those?
Yeah, there is.
The bracket, the bracket aside.
Those, those are the fields, that's kind of the design.
Okay.
There's actually more area in those fields than required for a top of the mountain. But I had them do the maximum.
Once available.
Available area where you could put a tank, a septic system, that's what they've got. Some of those have, they have an initial and repair area on the lot.
Okay.
So, they could put, some of those septic systems could go in the back if they wanted to do that, and then they could use the front for repair, I mean, there's any number of ways they could do it. Those are just available field areas that they can use. They would often have them size house to build.
So, I realize that, you know, our subdivision in particular ordinance needs some cleanup, but, um, the, I mean, there's nothing we can do now, I honestly haven't reviewed it in, in major detail, but I think, I'm trying to remember what our zoning permit requires when they come to build homes, and I think a lot of that will be covered by the zoning permit, but I just, I'm just gonna quickly check. You can do that some other time, though. Do you know what I'm saying? The zoning permit when they go to build a home.
Right, setbacks, height, lot width, and all that.
Only because it is so minor, yeah.
Right.
But because it also fronts the road, I just wanna be sure that we are, you know, covering all the bases.
Right, well, the setbacks are compliant with our sections on subdivisions. It's 150, .60 through 80, and so that means once, whoever he sells it to, once they build the house, as long as they build it within the setback, it will be compliant.
Remind me, because I'm rusty, but isn't the setback, not that I agree, but I'm saying, isn't the setback 150 and then it can be reduced by the council to 85?
No, it's a minimum of 85, and then for major subdivisions, it should be more depending on the tract, but not for a minor subdivision.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to remember. So, they, the, O8O doesn't require 150, they only require the minimum of 85?
Right, and only for large tract subdivisions, I actually talked to Chaplain about that just to make sure.
But that's only one, not only zero.
Yes, that's correct.
And it looks like the site for the buildable site area that they have planned or proposed all looks relatively same square footage wise. Is there a minimum on the house sizes to be built?
Not in our ordinance.
Okay.
It's just constrained by the setbacks.
We will, we will have that in the restrictions.
The only thing they restrict is the height, which is 35 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, what's amazing is right here on the corner, if you look, you have the height, but then it's on a hill already, those.
Right.
Homes look like they just are.
Right, of course, the height is from the ground.
The ground, right.
At the house site, so, but I get what you're saying.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point? So, this will go to the meeting on Tuesday, or that, November meeting for more discussion, is that correct? Or we're going to consent agenda?
If you have no revisions for now, then, then there's no need for a discussion, you can.
I mean, I'd put it on consent, and then if anybody's got questions, we can pull it off.
You can pull it off.
Sure.
Well, if any of us have questions, I can pull it off, do I have a question? I have a question, can I pull it off?
Yeah. And Nick, you can do it too.
So moved?
Yeah, all right, cool, wait.
All right, so we'll move on to the next topic.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything. Next up, we have discussion of due 2019 records retention and disposition schedule.
Barbie? Okay, the, um, North Carolina Cultural, Natural and Cultural Resources has redone the retention schedule and has drafted a new 2019 schedule that they need all councils to, towns and counties to adopt before the end of the year. What I have placed here is what is actually in that document and the years for the documents to be destroyed, which is the disposal calendar. Also is the agreement that you all signed for that. I didn't put the entire packet in there because it would make the agenda too big. So, but if you remember, in, in previous meetings, I had included the entire schedule that identifies each individual one.
Yeah.
So, it was super long.
So, do you remember the highlights, like, what, we've had one for a while, and then there's certain parts you fill in?
Yes, and if you'll see.
So, have you changed any of those from past requirements?
Basically, we have not changed a lot. There, what Cultural did, there are some areas that they merged together because the previous, the 2016 one that you all had was fairly longer than this of what was in, in the document itself. So, they've combined that information and put them under generic headers here. So, we haven't changed a lot as far as when to dispose of them.
So, so I'm looking at this sheet, like, I don't know what it is on yours, uh, number 23, right, on my PDF packet? And just have, yeah, I was asking destroy in office after.
Which one, which one are you looking at?
Uh, VLM records retention and disposition schedule.
I mean, but what number? You said 23, there's not a 23. Which standard are you looking at?
Oh, I'm not there yet, I just want to.
Oh, I'm sick, okay, yes, yes.
So, I like the chart, that's helpful. So, when, all those things that are destroy in office after, so just, because I'm not sure if I asked the previous question clearly enough, have any of those things in that chart changed from previous years? I don't mean, has, has, you know, Cultural and our types changed it? I mean, has Marvin changed anything that's in that list?
Marvin, Marvin only does what, um, is what's accepted with Cultural. So, you, we haven't changed anything as far as years of destroy.
Okay, so, in our own, and I don't, I don't, I'll, I can pull it up. When you get the records retention schedule, right, it comes as a blank, and then there's, there's blank spaces, not in all places, but in some. And so, it's up to the discretion, for example, of the municipality at that point, to choose whether or not they keep things like building permits or zoning permits, for example, for one year, or 10 years, or five years, right? It's a, right, not all of it, everything is like that, just some things. So, I'm just wondering, just to be 100% clear, so there was nothing that we have discretion over that staff is proposing we change?
But can I, can I say something real quick, gentlemen?
Yeah.
So, there is, what, what you're talking about, essentially, is the term administrative value and what that administrative value is in. And there are, in 2012, when the Department of Cultural Resources changed the way they did, they, they basically required municipalities to depict what administrative value means to that certain municipality. So, that's where you have the choice for 10 years versus 20 years versus 30 days, whatever it is. We have administrative value defined in our current schedule now. We did reference that when we were creating the schedule that she's proposing today.
Okay.
So, we didn't, we didn't go down and index, like, the changes that we had proposed, but I mean, we did try to model that administrative value from what we currently have now, if that's possible. Um, what we can do is provide the entire packet in the next agenda, because we're not asking for action today, and then you can go back and look through that administrative value and see if you have any issues with those, with that term. Uh, but that's the only thing that we can actually do as municipalities to find what that administrative value is for that given record.
So, you're saying that's how it's changed, is that now, which, I always wondered why they didn't do before. So, you can essentially choose between retention packets based on what types of services and so on you offer?
Right, well, no, the retention packet is the same, you just, like, for instance, with the, with permits, for example, there are certain portions that they say you have to keep indefinitely. And I don't know off the top of my head, but let's just say building plans, you have to keep building plans indefinitely. And I'm using that as an example, I don't have that picture, but permit, you can destroy that when the administrative value is in. So, what is that administrative value to each municipality? Is it 30 days, is it 10 years, is it a year? And so, in your, uh, in your lease packet.
Okay.
You'll see, you'll see, you'll see the term until X day, and then that, X day is what we fill in, and that's what we have determined is our own internal administrative value.
Okay, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying. You're talking about actual administrative, like, value as opposed, I thought you were talking about that they were assigning you like a code when you.
No, 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 no.
Okay, got it, I hear you. So, here's where, here's what my concern was, and I don't have, haven't had time to go through and compare to what we have, but I know that, and I know this will be a really bleary, bleary a lot of eyes, but there have been instances where we've gone to go get records, for example, zoning permits, this is when it comes, conditional use permits in particular. And our retention value, last time we, it was passed, was at six years. And then we had an extensive public records request from a real estate firm, something firm, who wanted to see the conditional use permits and everything that had been issued to fire the Orange Country Club. And we couldn't, and we couldn't pull all those because it seemed as if some of them had been destroyed. And so, you know, that's just one instance. So, six years might have been okay, but, but if we've reduced, so I kind of would like to know what, if anything, we're reducing below what we already had. I wouldn't want to go more stringent than what we had, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so what we can do, Barbie, is in, um, in their agenda packets for the next meeting, we can include those that change that apply to us, and then just pencil in what we currently have, and they can differ.
Yeah, that would be great.
Then we can put what, what was on, on the schedule for 2016?
Yeah.
So that you can see a comparison as to what, what we're proposing now?
Right.
And what, what we were doing in the past.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because just for everyone else who knows, when you get the retention schedule, it's huge because it covers municipalities that have retention schedules for their police department, for their hospitals, right? So, obviously, that doesn't apply to us, but those few things we do, particularly with regard to zoning, we want to be sure that we've got the records around. That's all, so, yeah, that would be awesome, if everyone else is okay with that.
One, one thing that I just looked at that was highlighted, I thought we talked about, like, it's the second one down, and it's saying we only have to have it for a month, and then we can destroy, is agenda meeting packets. I thought agendas were supposed to be, you know, where people could compare what the agenda was originally, if we changed it, and stuff like that, so that's the only one that kind of got my wheels spinning on, okay, why are we only doing that for a month when we talked about putting it on the records?
But your minutes are your official record, and those minutes should record what, what actions you took on that agenda.
But Barbie, just so you know, and I don't know, it says minutes of public bodies, five years? I believe archives, the Cultural Department requires we keep those permanently, unless, well, one, they have to be archived, I think, every year, but aside from that, I, I'm positive we have to keep minutes permanently, am I not right, Christina?
Say it again, the agendas, I didn't hear you, the what part?
The minutes.
So, there's two things, yeah, the mayor rightfully brought up agenda packets, which, to be honest, we've always.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think Cultural just requires you to keep agendas, I don't think. But Barbie and I had this discussion whenever we were trying to decide certain parameters for the administrative values, and the agendas are really important for me, and I think that we, I think we actually kept them in there a little bit more, I don't want to say permanently, but a little bit more longer than what they suggested.
Okay, so, so here, no, let me, I just, because I know you can't hear, so the mayor had brought up the agenda and the packets, and then I had brought up the meeting minutes. And so, I can tell you, at least in terms of what we've always done, is we've always ensured that, that to us, the definition of meeting minutes included the packet, so that the entire thing was archived. So, because as you all know, minutes often mean very little if you don't have the reference to, to the ordinance or, in fact, I think the reference to the ordinance is required in the meeting minutes, so this was our way of doing it, was attaching all the packets to the minutes and filing them, so that's one issue. The agenda, we recently started doing that as well.
We discussed it.
Right, well, I, I know that as a clerk, I carried over for Mel and Graham, who'd also, already been doing it for 10 years. So, I did it, you know, it's been done for a while, but, aside from that, then I jumped to this list, and we talk about minutes for public bodies, and I was, that's what I'm saying, I believe, for Cultural and Archives is required to keep permanently. So, there's.
Yeah, I, I look at it like, I'm on my desk, I look at it like, and I clutch that, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, anyway, so, yeah, there's, that, I mean, I don't think I've seen this chart in the past packet, but I'm glad it's here, I just don't, didn't understand some of the selections that were in here.
So, are these the minimums of what we, do we have to adopt this?
These, these are the headers that are straight from the packet that you all received from the total book of what Cultural is.
And it's their minimums, yeah.
But they, so can we make them?
We can make them more stricter.
You, you can make them more stricter, I mean, that's, this, this is, this is only a proposed, and.
But meeting minutes at five years?
Yeah, I think that's.
That seems.
All right, so let's let, let's let you guys do some more research, and then do the comparison stuff, and have it in the November.
Maybe have Chaplain look at that, especially the one you were talking about, the five years, because I agree, I think, minutes, we talked about, I know this former council bodies have talked about those just being in perpetuity because they're easy to store in a, you know.
On digital leave and. So, okay, but, good job, thanks for the chart, that helped a lot.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right, moving on, and Mary, just so you know, there is, the one thing we did mention from all the, there is a hard stop at 11:30, so.
Oh, man.
Yeah, so we, we want to try and get through as many as we can, what we just discussed, so, just for your record, for knowledge. Next up, we have discussion of meeting minutes for 9:10, 9:26, 19, and work session, and 9:10, 8, 19, regular.
Hopefully, this thing will come on. Are we putting these up? Don't we have, like, don't get me wrong, that's fine, 11:30, but for a work session, this is a pretty long agenda. Are we thinking we're gonna get through all this stuff?
Oh, yeah, no, there's.
We are gonna, we are gonna power through it. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, so we're gonna do minutes now, right, that's what we're doing?
That's great. So, do we want to start with the first one?
These are the September 10th.
September 10th?
At the, at the bottom of that first page, write no one.
Yep.
And then I had something on the third page. Keep going. Write there number three, the planning board share update, that second paragraph, just take that out, it's not right.
Which one?
Oh. Did you change these?
Christina had me change.
Okay, yeah, because what, because what was in there was not accurate, so, okay, that was it. That was all I had for those. Okay, yeah, because what was in there was not accurate. So, okay, that was it. That was all I had for those. They had said that she said something about being quasi judicial, which I went back and listened to. She didn't know that.
Sorry, which change were you referring to? I was, I got lost there.
So, number three, the, where it starts, Ms. Amos explained, in our packet, it said, Ms. Amos explained the public involvement meeting was a quasi judicial process. The village hall had to use caution, that just, that whole thing was just not accurate. So, I told Christina that, and so she must have talked to Barbie and changed it, so I'm fine with that. I was just going to have you take it all out, but that's fine.
Okay, so make sure I'm looking at the right ones. All right.
This is 19.
Number three.
That's all I had for 9:10.
Oh, there it is, okay. Oh, got it. All right, yeah. Probably come on, all right, sorry. Cut out, no, you're right.
Anything else, any others from anybody else?
That was it? That was just so set?
That's it.
Okay.
No, I mean, that was just so, but no.
For 9:10.
Yeah. We got 9:26, and 10:08. I didn't have any changes, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, so, maybe I'm lost. I'm just looking at my packet. You're saying there's the other ones that were sent before are still being reviewed, or am I lost?
No. No.
Okay, so, review of 9:10, right? September 10.
I'm good there.
Yeah.
9:26, I don't have any changes for.
I don't have them in here, 9:26.
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going, because you got the attachments in there too. Oh, it was row hit, and then September 26, okay.
Those are the attachments for the September 10.
Over the other meeting. Oh, right, okay, those threw me off. Got it, thank you. All right, never mind. So, now on September 26.
I didn't know how to change this.
Yeah, that's all good. I didn't have anything there.
Thank you, Ellen.
Nope.
Oh, that was good. Um, sorry. Thought we concluded something. And... Great, looks good. Awesome.
10:08.
You're good with 10:08?
I did not have any changes for 10:08.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion to put on the consent agenda for the November 12 meeting, September 12.
Yeah.
Um, meeting, uh, the minutes from 9:10, 19, 9:26, 19, and 10:08, 19, with changes noted in this meeting.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next up, we have a discussion consideration of RS-2019-10-01, resolution of personnel policy. Christina, that was you. Do you want to table that till you get here, or...
It's just pretty basic.
Uh, it's, it's in, I'm getting ready to turn it up. Right, right, so I'll be there in about 10 minutes.
Aren't they the minor changes that we've been showing all along?
It's just one page. It's just one page.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think there's anything in this...
What she just added was on...
All we want to do is add to the consent, right?
On closed session to, um...
Right, to...
To the work session.
14, to rule 14.
Agenda.
No, 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 that's...
Yeah, it's just, it's just rule 14, I forgot to remember the number correctly.
No, that's not this. We're talking about the resolution adopting the Village of Marvin personnel policy.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's, that's pretty straightforward.
It's one page.
Right, okay, that's what I was looking at too. So, do you want us to take action, or you just want us to look and put it on the agenda for consent agenda?
Put it on the consent agenda. There's, I mean, it's like one page.
Yeah.
Okay, so make a motion to put, oh, she did send discussion and consideration.
Okay.
But we would just put it on the consent agenda.
Well, and is this as amended? Because there were those small, those personnel changes that we had with regard to the, you know, that coincide with the SEI form, unemployment form.
That, that policy's already been approved, though. This is just really solidifying the policy in the, uh, the resolution format. Y'all already approved that policy, those changes.
Didn't we already have this done somewhere?
Not the policy, not the resolution.
Not the resolution.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to put resolution RS-2019-10-01, resolution of personnel policy on the consent agenda on the November 12 meeting.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, the discussion of resolution RS, RS-2019-10-02, of support for critical intersections.
Awesome. So, um, you might have heard by now, the Union County came up with 15 intersections in the county, and two of them are in Marvin. Um, those two intersections are Joe Carr Marvin Road and Bonds Grove Church and Waxaw Marvin Road. They identified those intersections as problematic for various reasons, sight distances, crashes, um, bad geometry in general. Um, but if that's, you know, that's agreeable, those intersections are pretty bad. Um, and so, the county is requesting a resolution of support for the results of this report, um, in basically saying that in the next year, in the coming year, they're going to be doing a study on each of these intersections, and then after that, they're going to be doing the design. Um, so the support, it includes some cost share as well. We're looking at really, like, about 10%. So, for the studies of each intersection is $2,500, and for the design and construction, um, $100,000 for each intersection. And if, and they're asking, they're trying to apply for a grant now, so in this discussion, I'd also want to ask if you'd be agreeable to that $2,500 per intersection for that, for that cost share for the grant when they apply for it.
I think, I don't want to speak on everyone's behalf, I think the $2,500 is a no-brainer, but what the $100,000 is, is that, I'm looking at this resolution, they're not asking us to...
Right, this is not, the resolution is just to announce the support and for the study. The $100,000, and even then, the study money is coming out of the next year's budget.
And the study will dictate, will refine the numbers, I would imagine. Okay. So, what you're looking for is us to support the critical intersection analysis?
Yes.
Okay.
And to say if you would be in support of the $2,500 per intersection.
So, if you don't mind, I think we should separate that. So, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we add Resolution 2019-10-02 to the consent agenda for the November 1st meeting. Um, and that's my motion for just the resolution.
What, November 12?
Oh, it's November 12. Yes.
It's the November 1st.
No, no, it says, it says 02. This is the second resolution of the month.
No, no, I'm sorry, you said November 1st meeting.
Did I say it? Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, November meeting, period. Whatever that date is, to 12. Yeah, 12. So, that, thank you, sorry, I'm slow. That's my motion.
So, we're just adding it to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Quick question, can Alville funds be used for the $100,000 for participate once it gets to that?
For sure.
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, no, because we don't own those roads.
State road.
Oh, yeah, they, if we were, yeah, actually, that's a good point. If we were going to then assume them, then...
Yeah, which we're not planning on.
Not those roads.
I don't think so.
Not those roads.
Okay, just... Probably budgetary.
That was a good thought.
And the second, the second point of discussion in this item is to decide, and they're kind of asking to apply for the grant, kind of ASAP. So, if you would like to decide whether you support $2,500 per intersection for the study of the design.
Okay, so...
The $5,000 hit.
I would just...
Can I ask one question real quick? I didn't realize it was $2,500 per intersection. I thought it was per the entire study.
Oh, it's per intersection.
Okay, so how many intersections are on there?
Two.
Two.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the two are, that are in Marvin, and this is also going in next year's budget, so we don't have to do a budget amendment or anything. This is for the 2021 fiscal year budget.
Okay, so I'll just make a motion, because, um, I'll make a motion that we, the village council support, um, an amount not to exceed $2,500 or, sorry, right, $2,500 each? $5,000, $5,000 to have Union County conduct a critical intersection study of Waxaw Marvin and Bonds Grove Church Road and Joe Carr and Marvin Road.
You want to say total of $5,000 or $2,500 per study?
Right.
Either way, okay. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Motion passes. And then, um, next up is a discussion of joint municipal resolution to oppose high-density development outside municipal limits and policy for communication of development with neighboring governments.
Is that what I was talking about, like, months ago?
Yes, yes, it was. So, finally...
Making sure that I'm not, like, losing it.
So, the staff report kind of explains the details of this, so just for time's sake, there's a lot to digest here. Basically, we were discussing an ETJ a while ago, and we found out that that is not going to be feasible for various reasons, mostly centering on that Union County has to allow it, and they wouldn't. Um, but then Wesley Chapel sent us, us as in, like, our neighboring municipalities, this resolution saying that they are going to petition Union County to oppose high-density housing in the immediate vicinity of their municipality. Not that it obliges the county to anything, but they came to us and said, would you look at this resolution and consider signing a similar resolution? And so, I wanted to bring it to you and say, you know, is this something that you support? And is there anything that you want to add or, you know, change about it? And then I'll construct a resolution like it.
So, there's at least two things that come to mind. One, the adoption of Chapter 160D, the new legislation that goes into effect in about 18 months, covers ETJ extensively and proposes new rules around it. So, I think we need to have Chaplin look at that.
Sure.
Because I don't know if this complies with the 160D requirements, off the top of my head. And, you know, why enter something into something if it's going to be amended in a few months, number one. Number two, if this is formally ETJ, it doesn't change this idea that you're, that you'll be required to put, um, people from outside Marvin onto village boards, correct? That's what current ETJ says. So, um, that is something I think we need to consider. It, um, and I honestly, I think it's something that the council should probably turn to residents about, because I'm not sure that residents are, you know, necessarily, um, it's, the resolution for low density, my inclination is that they'd support that, but the flip side of the legis, of the statute says that when you enter into an ETJ agreement, you also need to allow people from those outside affected areas an opportunity to sit on your advisory boards.
Right.
So, that is the issue, that the idea of opening up Marvin so that other people sit on the advisory boards is something I have reservations about in current climate.
Right, well, see, actually...
But are they asking us for ETJ?
This is, yes, this is not an ETJ.
They're just asking us for a resolution.
Right, since we've already gone through the, you know, the thought process of seeing that an ETJ wouldn't be really feasible, um, this is more so to, to stress to Union County, and this is not an obligation, this is not establishing anything.
They don't have, they can just say, okay, great, they did a resolution.
Right, right, but, but we think, no, this is something that we thought of also, kind of independently, and then Wesley Chapel came to us, that if we had this kind of resolution coming from all of Marvin, Waxaw, Wesley Chapel, Weddington, Mineral Springs.
Yeah.
Then it would have a lot more weight.
Okay, so this is what I guess I'm not understanding. Why, where's, how is this compared to ETJ? Like, this is just a...
Well, this is not an ETJ at all. This is just a resolution of a petition to Union County to not build incompatible land uses right next to the municipal order.
Perfect example would be when we had the extraction.
Okay, sorry, I thought you guys were trying to do a resolution to try to, to oppose.
No, we can't have an ETJ because Union County wouldn't accept it. That discussion...
This would have been, this would have been helpful when we had the clashing with the state senator who DAX'd the piece of property up there, and now they're putting in town homes when he said they're going to put in all these nice...
That'd be nice for that, too. Thanks for the comments, what happened.
Right, again, this is a petition to Union County to consider this thing, so it's not, even if all...
So, the ETJ was kind of like blinking, and I'm like, what?
Right, the ETJ can't happen.
Just a resolution to, like, be like, like, over here where we're in unincorporated, we won't want a skyscraper to go up.
And it doesn't even buy them. It just, like, it always just...
Especially because we have so many pockets.
Can I, can I, I hate to piggyback on this, but one of the things in 160D, in case you're still interested in this, is an interesting notion that as long as you let the county know that you want to extend ETJ within a mile radius of your town, if you're under 5,000 people, I think, or under 10,000, you automatically get jurisdiction within that one acre.
One acre or one mile?
Sorry, one mile. So, that's something to keep in mind. We might, if I understand the way 160D is written, we might already have some degree of...
The new one, that's going to go into a, okay, so you're going to have Chaplin...
Right, if there's some sort of automatic thing that happens as soon as...
Not automatic. You have to, again, you have to tell the county that you're going to invoke it. We can't just automatically, like, go across the street and say, why are you putting it in there? But...
We have to do it proactively.
Similar to this in a way, like a resolution.
Yeah.
But I thought that, now that it's come up, I wanted to put that on the table.
Okay, that's definitely good to look into, because, right.
Yeah.
Because the main hold, hold up, holding back is that the county wouldn't allow it at the moment. They wouldn't allow our ETJ, but if we can, you know, do it without their permission, then...
Yeah, it was really fascinating when I read that over, and I, and I was pretty sure the school of government confirmed that. Still, um, have, double check. It looks like an, we would qualify for at least an automatic one mile with notification.
We've got to ask for it.
Yes.
Or tell them that we want it.
Right.
But I still think we should do this resolution.
Yes.
Sure.
Like, absolutely.
Sorry, we got off track, but...
No, no, I mean, it's a combination. So, Wesley Chapel, okay, so this is theirs, what they've done.
Right.
Okay. So, I think we should just look at it and then, you know, come up with suggestions and then...
Exactly.
You can kind of see what you've got.
The policy for communication of development with neighboring governments is going to be the key, that how do we put that in place? Do you have representatives from Marvin and all the surrounding towns have a separate meeting that then they report back? That's going to be where it's going to get...
I'm glad you brought that up, because there was talk at one point of having, like, a joint planning coalition. Um, and I know while I was on the planning board, we were talking about this idea that we have joint meetings on other planning commissions to invoke this sort of thing or discuss this sort of thing.
I think this is a good opportunity to revisit that with, yeah.
And just to throw it out there, we already, you know, it's a very, it's just really with mayors, we've met, but that's kind of gone on the wayside and stuff, but as the new elected officials come to play, I would, you know, I have in the past hosted, or we've gone to a place where the newly elected people coming in and opportunity to meet the key individuals from, like, the counties, such as the commissioners and other surrounding. It was always nice to know who the other council people for Weddington already come in. I noticed, I think I saw four separate signs for mayor, people running for mayor for Waxaw, so that'll be a fair, there may be four or five running. Steve is, uh, is, the current mayor is stepping aside, but...
Not just, and it's great, but I feel like in the past, what's happened, even during your term, even when I came on, that there were these coalitions, but there was no active mission, right?
There's maintenance to complain about, so...
It was more, it was more of awareness, that this is what's coming, or this is what's happening in our town, and then we'd bring that back.
As opposed to a formal sit-down where the public might even be invited, here... As opposed to a formal sit down where the public might even be invited here where the topics of the day are like, what's affecting this area and what do you do about it, if anything? Just a thought.
So it's more beer summit than we had in the past. It was a beer summit. So I mean, how fairness, yeah. Well, that's when we get the public call, but it's more of a casual, it's not, it's not official, it's more active. But I'm actually in favor of something more official that you're, you, you assign representatives from your town and every community does that, and then they have an official meeting and if public wants to do it, but, you know, mayors can.
That's how we got the LARP done too, you remember Nick, right? I mean, and it went pretty far, so it dated now, but it went pretty far in terms of getting NCDOT's attention to the roads, things like that. But I know we're moving on some.
These are all great options, so.
So is, are we in favor of this exact wordage, verbiage, or?
I think, I think Rohit needs to work on it.
Yeah, you should all, you should all look at it, see if there's anything you want to add.
And then maybe have it for the next meeting.
I would have what you think is appropriate, Rohit, and then for the next meeting, and then when we get our packet, like we will have read this and looked at this and made notes. And then if we have any suggestions, we can incorporate it to what you've got.
Sure.
Can I ask that you just redline what you've removed so we can kind of compare?
Okay.
All right. All right, so no action there. Next up, we have discussion of stormwater ordinance revision.
Rohit, you got a lot on the agenda today.
Yeah. I mean, most of it is stuff that you all asked for.
No, it's our fault.
All right, so this, this ordinance was intended to help out Village Hall in the case of stormwater retention ponds. The ordinance was originally proposed as to add the words regrading greater than one acre to the clause that says that all developments shall provide stormwater detention to up to 100-year storms. You can see that in the redline ordinance next page. But there are some issues with this that are brought up in the planning board, most notably that anyone could come and just regrade one acre at a time and not have to deal with stormwater retention. That's not environmentally, you know, healthy. And so I wanted to propose that we, you know, discuss things like, well, actually, we had spoken with the engineer for Village Hall. He said one thing is that we need to change the word regrading to disturbing and also to consider verbiage of, you know, involving a larger common plan or excluding this clause if, if the development is part of a larger common plan. And also to have some verb, or I'm also proposing some verbiage about having similarity with Charlotte's ordinance, which is what our stormwater ordinance basically goes off of.
Okay.
There's a lot to digest there, I know.
Want me to chime in now? Okay, so number one, if anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, the catalyst for this was definitely Village Hall. But the real problem was, you all guys said, yeah, go ahead, let the staff look on it, let me look at it. When I finally understood what it was the engineer was worried about, it was not about, oh, the one acre, it was that the current, and you have it in front of you, right? If you look at the current text, it says that stormwater retention is required for any development in the village. So once I read that, I realized, oh, that's what he's talking about. Because the way that that reads and the way that that applies would mean that under section 151.080, if you want to write it down, anyone applying to build a singular home on a lot that is, well, let's just say here, or, well, let's not see the home. If someone bought, the arteries bought the corner and they have this land and they want to build a home, they would be required to provide, per the code, the way it's written and the engineer sees it as, they would be required to provide stormwater retention.
For one home.
For one home. Well, we have, I'll say never because I've been around long enough to say that, at least 13 years, at least in 13 years, no zoning permit that's come through the door, who's building a home on usually three acres or, or one acre, is required to provide stormwater retention. We just never implemented that. That said, our code does kind of say that. And so the way I understood it was that the engineer would like us to amend the code so that he doesn't feel compelled at this point to impose it on, and we, and if that's what the code says, then we should be imposing it on everybody who comes through the door and is trying to build and disturb anything at all. And so the word development is what's problematic. What that leads to then is, well, if the word development is problematic, how do you change development so that it more precisely, you know, applies to what we need it to apply to? Okay, so now we go over to what's required of the state. The state requires that any land disturbing activity, and I agree with him there, I think that's key, when we say grading, I don't think it's sufficient. So any land, land disturbing activity over one acre, and that's a state requirement, whether we wrote it down or we didn't write it down or we applied it or not, it would apply, right? So knowing that that one acre is a state requirement, the thought is, how do you define, define development? Where do we want to apply and make sure? How do we make, sorry, how do we make it consistent? We already don't require individual homeowners or people dividing, building on a single lot to provide retention. That doesn't mean they can't, don't abide by the state that have to. But what does our ordinance need to say so that it's consistent with what we do? Yes, it started with Village Hall, but it doesn't change the fact that there's this issue right now in our code.
There's an inconsistency there.
And if we, we have a definition of terms or terminology, development means this, not one home, because that's what we're trying to avoid is what I'm hearing.
Here's the problem with that. The problem with that is, we do have, we do have a definition, I think, of development, pretty sure we do. But here's the other problem, because when you go to issue zoning permits and you go to the zoning permit section, which I think is 102, 102 says that any expansion of a building or installation or erection of any kind of structure is building and requires a permit. We don't mean that either, right? So you have to be careful that when you go to define development, that you're not conflicting with other portions of our code that require people to get permits when they're putting on, changing the footprint of their home, for example. So that's why, just throwing out a couple of ideas, I think I have two of them. One was to say that any development beyond the uses that are permitted in 151.080, that is the section that does not cover large tract residential, but it covers all the uses that are allowed by right in the residential district. That includes the church, that includes homes, that include, not office, I checked that, it doesn't include office.
Village Hall.
Government buildings it does include. Now, see, here's the thing we have to remember, that doesn't change the fact that if Village Hall is moving more than an acre, they still have to abide by that law. So the text, at least I threw out with Christina, was any use under .080, notwithstanding the fact that all development that disturbs more than one acre of land is still required to abide by all state regulations and reviews. I didn't, I didn't send that to anybody. I wasn't quite sure where we were at. But more or less, that's what I figured we could do. I didn't, it's not up to me to propose it really, but I'm not particular, I think I've, you know, I think somehow because it was with Village Hall, some people sort of thought this is my thing. But at the end of the day, I'm just, at this point, I just think we, there's an inconsistency, right? That he's pointed out and he's right, so we should iron it out.
So in simple terms, let me just ask this question real fast. The, the, because we, you and I had a discussion about a term that was like multi.
That was a second option.
Multi-unit or something like that. So excluding that, excluding that terminology, I think Rohit and I can entertain what you just mentioned about 080.
Okay.
And see if we can add that in because that's an easy fix.
I'm, you know, the first, it, it, I'm, either one of those is fine. I wasn't sure which one you guys prefer. The, I drafted two just to give them examples and I can send them to you guys. But whatever you guys want to propose, as long as.
Did you send me the second?
I said, yeah. I sent you the first one and then I was like, well, look, if you want to do it this way and just make it apply to any multi-unit development, you can do that.
I'll look back, I don't remember.
But so there's two there.
What's easier to revise the ordinance or to do a text amendment?
Oh, they're the same thing.
Oh.
Yeah, anytime you revise the ordinance, it's a text amendment.
Okay, so, okay, because that's why I was confused, because under requested action it has both of them.
It's the options.
Two separate options though.
Oh.
I would have thought that it would have been the same thing. That's why I was confused.
Sorry, where is that? I didn't.
It's under requested action underneath the memo. It's the very last thing. It just says, consider a concrete public hearing for the text amendment or direct staff to revise the ordinance amendment or direct staff not to pursue it.
Oh, I'm so glad you said that. Yeah, don't ever amend the ordinance.
That's why I was like, that's why I was very confused. I was like, wait, what's, what?
That wouldn't be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have to, okay, that's what I thought, that's why I was, okay.
Especially zoning, I should say, I should clarify, if it's zoning or land use.
So Rohit and I will work on that language with your, with your suggestion, not the multi-unit one.
Yeah.
Because I do have some concern with that one.
Do you want me to read it to you?
Sure.
I, well, we'll pull it up real quick. You guys are in a hurry, but.
We can go back and look at it, we can put it in the November agenda if it's not a substantial change because if it is, has to go back through the process.
But should we go ahead and call for the public hearing?
You could.
I mean, that's my, but that's kind of where I was.
I think we have a lot more work.
Work to do before we're ready for it. Okay, that's fine then. So why don't you guys work on it and just bring it back to us at the November meeting?
That'd be good.
Well, hold on, it's really up to them to decide.
Right.
Whether they have a lot of work to do or not.
Sure.
Right? Okay. And I'm not pushing it, I just want to be sure that you understand that as I was, Christina asked this question, well, it went through the planning board and the planning board provided a recommendation, and that's great, but, and that's good, but because it was under, they were under this assumption that this was just about Village Hall, they provided a recommendation, which is just a recommendation. I don't think they understood that what the engineer is getting at is, look, you guys have to start either applying this to everyone who comes through the door.
Or we gotta fix it.
Or you gotta fix it. And, and because, and she, and Christina had asked me, do you need a new, does it need to go back through the process again? If you guys all want it to, it can, but because we're all dealing with the exact same paragraph and the same statutory reference, it really doesn't. But I'm not saying you should call for the public hearing or you shouldn't, I'm just gonna take the opportunity to let you know how it works.
And just to piggyback off that, I did ask Chaplin that same question just to make sure that we didn't have to go through it if that was necessary. He said as long as there's not a substantial change, council can decide to do whatever they want, as long as it's not a major change.
You mean not having to go back to planning board?
Correct.
Okay.
So at this point, I sent it to you, right Christina?
Because all you're really talking about is cleaning up the word development in terms of what is, what exactly does that mean? So if it's just that simple of a change, I don't, I mean, and I don't know, I'd have to look and see what those uses are in that.
Changing some other verbiage to.
Can I just, can I mention the development, the definition of it, just so, you know?
Our definition or?
Yeah, in the, in the ordinance, the definition of development is the construction of any new building or other structures or impervious surface on a lot, relocation of any existing building on a lot, or the use of a lot or tract for any new uses. And that's pretty general and.
That's very broad.
Clearly includes individual homes.
Right.
But she's referring to what exactly develop, what developments it would apply to and not apply to.
Right, where do you want retention ponds, right? We're not gonna require.
Retention ponds for one home.
Right, for one home, we've never done that. It would be crazy.
And practically, a single home doesn't develop enough impervious surface to require retention. It's kind of, it's still enough, there's still enough land.
They could, they could choose to do that.
Right. But there's enough land for the, you know, the stormwater to still absorb.
But I mean, it sounds like it's pretty broad and not dialed down enough. So it sounds like, it sounds like it really needs to get cleaned up and then probably go back to the planning board. Because it does sound like that there's like a decent.
It could.
Would Chaplin clean that up or would that be something?
That, that we would coordinate it.
So here's what I had written, I don't, it's in a Disney email, but it's a little further down. So it says, okay, don't have to, just to get an idea of what the objectives, some of the objectives are. In order to prevent flooding and damage, it's too bad I can't show you, so, see the blue?
Yeah.
Okay. The black isn't already there. In order to prevent flooding and damage to properties, here's the new text, all development except individual structures and uses permitted in the R Marvin District pursuant to 151.080, that's just individual, not large tract subdivisions, shall provide stormwater detention to control peak runoff, that's our existing 10, uh, 2, 10, 2, 500-year, 24-hour storm events to pre-development levels, that's current ordinance, here's what's new. Not or proposed generally, notwithstanding the exception herein, all land development which disturbs a cumulative area of land exceeding one acre shall comply with 151.063, I batted that, stream buffers, because I think that's something we all still want, right? And we apply, we do apply, even single homes have to abide by our stream buffers. So shall comply with 151.063, stream buffers, and abide by NC State stormwater requirement, requirements regardless of the district in which the development is located. So that's saying even if you're in 080, you, you'll get away from state requirements.
Okay.
So FYI, that's the general rule. That was a couple, one of the ideas I broke, do you want me to do the other one? Just thinking about it.
You can.
The second one was if they wanted to do it this way, in order to prevent flooding, all multistructure or multi-unit development shall provide stormwater. And then the same thing, notwithstanding the exception herein, all land development which disturbs a cumulative acre or over one acre and stream buffers. So instead of applying it to the district, the R Marvin District, here applying it to all multistructure and multi-unit development. There's a problem with that because defining structures is also an issue, right? There's accessory structures, there's, help me out.
Walls count as structures.
Walls, right. And so it's safer to go with the district standard, I think.
Okay, so why don't you guys work on it with Mary's suggestions and see.
Sure.
What we can clean up. And again, if it's like, I mean, don't, don't not send it back to the planning board, like don't like, get it cleaned up enough that we're not having to do this again and, or soon. And if you have to send it back to planning board to look at it and send it back to planning board.
Well, you can give it to them on their next meeting, right? I feel they have a meeting this one?
Yeah.
They have a meeting. Can't get it on their next meeting, but.
But they've got one in November, like.
Yeah, November 19th.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you guys can get it back to us on the 12th and then we'll, we can, you know, say, yeah, that looks good, send it back to planning board and then we can just throw it on our consent agenda to do a public hearing in December.
Sure.
Like enough, if anyone's interested, I can send this to them. Again, this is just my quick draft, but gives you the gist of what needs to happen.
No, I mean, it definitely sounds like we've got, we need to clean it up and be more consistent and just define things a little more, not a little more, a lot more.
Right, the definition of development probably should stay the same, but it's what we use in stormwater section.
Right, that needs to be more defined. Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so moving on and just looking at the time here, anything that we can get through real quick or otherwise, what, suggesting maybe tabling the balance of it except for the quick.
Halloween, rescheduling Halloween.
Yeah.
What's that?
Is that okay, tabling this to the number 11 tree ordinance? Is that okay, tabling this to the number 11 tree ordinance?
You just called on the public hearing.
Yeah, we're, this is, this is actually final. There was a suggestion to make sure that, you know, this language doesn't appear anywhere else, and it really does not, in the whole tree section and the landscape section. This is the only place that needs to be changed to the proper unit of measurement.
So we just need to make a motion to call for a public hearing?
That's correct. Unless there's any further discussion.
Mary wants to talk about this tomorrow.
We can call for it at the next meeting. We still have November.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, you can still talk about a text amendment when you bring it. Like, so you can make the call, and then we can talk about it. It's not unusual, right?
Right, you can call for a public meeting, we still have discussion about it.
The council still can discuss it.
Which is what we're doing.
But, but we've got the November meeting, and they want this for the December meeting.
Oh. Am I here for this?
Yes. So you'll be, so we'll, so we'll have time to talk about it.
Yeah, we'll just put it on the November, when you talk about it, and then we'll call for it that day.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, because it's minor. I was just doing some work to make sure that we don't do a direct change without standardizing that change, but yeah, that's better.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
So we need a motion for that?
No.
To call for, or we do it at the next meeting?
No, 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 we're going to call, we're going to call for it in the November.
We're going to call for it in November.
So we're good, we're just gonna.
Okay, so table.
Yeah.
Swimming pool ordinance, can I do that real fast, if that's what's next?
Sure.
I think you all should have fun with this after I leave.
Okay.
Because I think the only reason I brought this up was because lawyer after lawyer, year after year, they have been telling us to take the pool approval out of the conditional use permit process. And I think it can be fixed, but it would, it would be, it would require me spending a lot of time to kind of do that. And I looked at it, and I was like, "You know what? I love you all, but I'm not in a particular hurry." If you guys are, then-
I'm not.
-amend it, but the planning board seemed to think that it wasn't worth it. So, you guys, it's up to you. I'm just going to say that.
We can break back up in February, maybe.
I just noticed the council said bring it back, so I wanted to be sure it was back.
I don't need, I mean, I honestly, like, unless we can figure out how to do it, like, if there's going to be a pool in a side yard that abuts, or in the backyard that abuts the side yard, like, I think we need to talk about it, because I, I mean, you know, I mean, unless we can figure out how to-
And then, and then screening is a issue too.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
So let me just say that our new code, right, does two things. One, any kind of pool or element of residential is heavily screened, and that's imposed by the zoning administrator. Number two, it also allows for zoning administrator discretion for what I call spot screening. So if there's another complaint that it's not enough, the zoning administrator has the authority then to go back in. And so when, with those two things in mind and available, right, it felt like an awful lot of steps for-
For us.
Right. When we didn't have a screening ordinance and a landscape ordinance, I could understand it, but now it just seemed like a lot to put people through when there's provisions now that he would be.
Has Chaplin made a determination about CUP versus no CUP for this kind of stuff?
No, we haven't talked to him.
Why don't you talk to him about that, and then we'll revisit this in like February?
Sure. Well, I just, I do want to mention one thing that the planning board noted. They said, you know, even knowing the screening, screening ordinance exists, they said still that they want to see the pools in this condition, because-
It's 15 feet wide minimum, though, for a pool, screening. And then you can still come in and put in more if you need it. Like, how much more have we, we've never required more than that. Like, when people come in, we've, at the most, I'm just saying from experience, and you know this too, Nick, we won't, like, they propose a row, and we're kind of like, "Okay, that's fine." Now we already require more than that.
Okay. All right. You guys-
So we can table that to like a February meeting?
Yeah.
Then the next?
Wait, hold on, Christina will say something.
Well, I was going to say the treasury report, unless y'all have any questions, y'all can just go ahead and approve that, and then we can not put that on.
Can I just say that when, they all implement it, but when you bring it back, I would suggest that the council and/or planning board see what used to be approved in a conditional use permit for screening, and what's now required, okay? So that they can understand why it's sort of-
So you guys bring that back to us?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to table the SEI again.
We're going to table it, we're just going to put it on the, can we just put it on the consent?
I got some questions.
Can we do that real fast?
No.
Come on.
Nothing past, yeah. We're already past 11:30, but, but just put it on November's meeting.
Yeah.
14 tables, or did we?
No, 14, I make a motion to approve the treasury report for September 2019.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then rule 14 was just-
Motion passes.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Rule 14 is, consider proposed change, are we going to table that?
No, it's literally just adding the closed session, session stuff on the date.
Yeah, there's no other change.
So, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposed change to rule 14 of the village council rules of procedure.
All is in favor. Motion passes. And then finally, we have Halloween.
Hold on, we're changing Halloween.
Yeah.
We're changing Halloween now.
Making a motion to-
There is a national, there is a national-
You have to call the president first.
Yeah, so there is a, yeah, there is a national movement for this, however.
Are you serious?
Yes, yes.
You guys are serious?
For the last Friday or Saturday.
Oh, wow.
However, the reason I brought this up and thought of it being so important to maybe discuss and see if we can support the communities that want to do it. Last night on TV, I was watching, and numerous HOAs on their own decided to move Halloween to Friday or Saturday because of the weather. And one of the issues is the storms. That rain, that's fine, but when you got storms and tornadoes and stuff like that. So, I kind of just proposed it to our HOA this morning, and I wanted to bring it out and say, "Look, we can be a support system, because we have access to all the HOA presidents. If they want to move it, all we're going to do is, we're kind of a support system saying that, hey, we could easily put something out, I think, on our blast, saying that, hey, because of weather, we strongly encourage that, you know, that make the decision however they want to do it. We're not telling them to do anything. However, if certain neighborhoods are saying, "Hey, we in Marvin want to move it to this," we'll support it and say, "Can't for Creek is moving it to Saturday or Friday and stuff. Here's the list of it." But we could get a blast out to the HOA presidents. I spoke to mine before, as Nick and I were driving in. And they basically said, "Hey, we're not going to tell anybody if somebody doesn't want to do that. We get that. I'm just looking at it from a support system." My biggest concern, obviously, is safety, not only from the winds and the lightning, but in this kind of weather conditions, more people will tend to-
Well, you can't put on your show.
I can't put on my show, yeah, trust me. It's more work if I move it, but it's all right. But more, more importantly, is you end up having more people in cars taking their kids, trick-or-treating, and more kids in cars, and kids in cars, and more on the road versus how they do it. I was just throwing it out there to see if there was any interest in reaching out to the HOA presidents and saying, if you want to move it.
So the bottom line is, it's hard stuff. Yeah, I know, I know. Bottom line is, you want us to send out an email and say, "Hey, if your neighborhood's thinking about moving whatever, Halloween, to Friday or Saturday night, let us know, and we'll send out an email."
Or, or are you, because, okay.
Is that what you're asking?
To be technical here, if you're asking about support, then it really should be a resolution, right? Technically. And so, if you, if that's what you're talking about, like, a formal support, then you might, yeah, you'd have to pass some-
They can, yeah, they can consider it for an action. I was throwing it out there from a safety standpoint.
Or just being the person that sends out the email. So the HOAs say, "Yeah, we're going to do this, can you just send it out on your email blast? Fire Corn has decided to move Halloween."
No, I don't think they are. I mean, they're just saying, "Hey, be smarter."
Our neighborhood's not, we're having it tonight, so.
They're saying be smart about it, but, you know, it's just, it's concerned is the safety, really, because of kids, and I'm just saying, we could be a support avenue. If we can let it go at this, and I'm fine with it. I just wanted to throw it out because I want to be on record saying that I'm just trying to address what I'm seeing other neighborhoods doing, and we would be a support system as a community group, but if you got someone doing it, find them.
I just don't know that, I mean, yeah.
You want to make up, we can make up a resolution on the fly. You want to make up a resolution on the fly? Is it worth it?
No.
I, I don't particularly care to, but I was just saying.
The HOAs have their own list of their neighborhoods, and if they want to send it out, then they can do that. I've already gotten-
Do we jointly agree that it is probably hazardous for families and small children to take-
To trick-or-treat in storms?
Right.
Yes, we do.
We all agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Would we recommend that if at all possible, that people refrain from conducting Halloween festivities this evening and put it off for tomorrow, if possible? Do we all agree?
Sure.
Okay, so you can tell them that we unanimously believe that people should consider their safety and consider moving, having, holding festivities-
But to check with their HOA, their individual HOAs, we're not saying, just, it's more of a warning, cautionary, don't do it.
Cautionary tale, okay.
Well, there's already a battle in California, because one person wants to hold off the parade, the other one's like, "We're coming rain or shine." So, you know, you can actually create some major political issues under the laws.
So we're good. All right, so you just-
It said tomorrow, it was Saturday.
Yeah, we just said be safe.
Be safe.
Be safe.
Okay. All right, and everything else gets tabled, including council comments, closed session, all that?
Yeah, closed session, we'll do that next time.
Oh, do we have a closed session?
Yeah.
Do we have any review of action items?
Let's see. I'm going to do this in backward form. You directed Christina and Rohit to speak with the attorney regarding the pool ordinance process and bring it back in February 2020.
Yes.
Then you directed Christina and Rohit to work on the language for multi-use surrounding developments for stone, stormwater ordinance revision.
Right, with the two drafts, right? You have two drafts?